And you're good.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustments. If you would, please call the row.
Rowan Mayhew.
We're not doing the big one.
Rowan.
Say hi, Rowan.
Rowan?
Say hi.
Say hi here.
Hi.
Yeah.
Mike Delametka.
Here.
Gil Over.
Here.
Lori Gibbs.
Here.
Don't be nervous, really.
Here. And, okay, so we got a quorum. Mike, it'll be a full vote tonight. Okay, so with that, we have a quorum. We're going to get things moving. The, uh, everybody get a chance to go over your minutes. Anybody have any changes, additions, subtractions, corrections? There being none, I'd like to take a motion to accept as written.
I move you accept the minutes as written.
Second?
All those in favor?
abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. Pass is four, zero, with one abstain. Okay. And we're gonna, we don't have no continued public hearings. Number eight, public hearing, possible consideration and a vote. Purpose of this agenda section is for the board to have a presentation from the applicant and open a public hearing for the public to provide input. The board may also deliberate the application, decide, and conduct a final vote at this time. Okay. Eight point one, which was Lakeside Ave Administrative Appeal, looks like based on the information provided to us, has came to terms and have decided to, uh, use the court system as remedies or whatever. And then if the court decides not to hear it, then it would be, uh, given the applicant the ability to come back to the zoning board as a right. Okay, so based on that, we don't need a vote or anything because it's been withdrawn. And we don't have to keep any of the paperwork or anything like that. So I'm assuming you got all the records you need. With that, we're just gonna move on. Okay, we're gonna, moving on to the next thing. We're gonna do a swap here. We have a gentleman here with eight point two and eight point three. I'm gonna move eight point three ahead. He's had surgery today and he's having a little issue with his hand at the moment. So, uh, I felt that was enough need to go ahead and do the swap so we can get him, go ahead and get him out there. If that's okay with everybody?
It's fine with me.
Which one's gonna be first?
Eight point three.
Thank you.
Layton Ave.
Which one?
Layton Ave.
Okay.
Okay. This will be number zero zero three seven, variance seventy-three, Layton Ave South, variance application. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article six, section two thirty-five, thirty-five A, front setback to allow for construction of a new house. Would the applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help.
Is this forward enough? How you doing? Yeah, my name's John Trickett, and we've just got a, um, small seasonal camp on the lot now. And my family is, is older now. They're gonna, before you know it, they'll be having, getting married, and then I'll be having grandchildren. And it's just way too small. So we're building a new place, which actually we'd like to retire there as well and make it our permanent residence. The place now is just a seasonal camp. Um, and it's an existing non-conforming lot that really doesn't give us much room to build a house that would be sufficient for the, the larger family. And we're just trying to, uh, see if we could do that. So that's the application based on that. And, uh, all the information is on there as to the size and whatnot we're trying to do. And we've got limitations because, you know, the fifty-foot setback from the state, they kinda pushed us towards the road. And it's an existing, uh, dirt road that's, uh, not accepted by the town. And really, where the road lies, we'd actually be within the requirements. But the road, the right-of-way actually comes further than is shown, than the road actually is. So it's kind of a gray area, but that's kind of the, the gist of what we're trying to do. So. I think you guys all have the map. I have a full-size plan if anybody wants to see that. It's easier to see than the little ones.
Are you gonna build a house about where it is now?
Yeah, actually, what we're gonna be doing is, the, the existing house is too close to the side lot. We're pushing it over to be more, to be conforming on the side. And there's some actually non-conforming sheds and whatnot. We're gonna take all of them down. So overall, we're doing quite a bit to make it more conforming, but it's the setback from the road which is gonna be an issue. There's an old, uh, privy that is actually right next to the road. I actually think it's halfway on. We're gonna take that down, even though it's kinda cool, but we're gonna take it down. Um, and there's a couple of sheds that are non-conforming as well. We're gonna take them down after construction because I've got some stuff stored in there right now that when we finish it, we'd put that in the house and then tear those sheds down, you know. So that's kinda what we're trying to do.
You've already taken down some of the trees.
Yeah, I've, I got, uh, uh, allowance from the, uh, conservation. They looked at it and I got a, sort of a letter from them saying it was okay. And then, uh, the state obviously gave me their permit. So we started trying to get ahead of it. I was hoping to do it this winter, but we're gonna push construction off till the spring. And I've got, uh, I started getting the place ready to tear down. I was, again, I was hoping to get it done over the winter so that we could enjoy the summer there, but it's not gonna happen at this point. So we're just trying to do preliminary there. So.
And that dotted line's almost square. What's that?
That would be, uh, a future garage. We're not gonna do it now because of the cost overall. Uh, we're trying to keep the cost of building the new place down a little bit. So that would be, uh, we'd like to, like, when I get older and I'm obviously retired, I'm not gonna be able to handle the snow. I wanna have a garage to put my car in. We're hoping to retire there and, you know, make it our permanent residence. So at that point, I'd, I'd build a garage so I can get my car inside there instead of clearing two, three feet of snow off it all the time, you know. So.
So what we're looking at is just that small extension that comes out. There's a corner that makes the triangles poking out towards Layton Ave. And also, it looks like some of the, I'm assuming is a front porch?
Yeah, it's mostly, there's, there's a little bump out in the back in that corner of, we're calling it the sunroom on the side there would be, uh, in there. And then the garage would be eventually there. So.
Are we discussing the garage tonight also?
Well, I'd like to. While we were here, when I was, uh, in with the, with you, we thought it would be the best thing to do, to try to.
Yeah, if you're looking to do it within the next two years or something.
Yeah, we'd like to try to do it. As soon as, I wanna see how much this ends up costing me, and if I can do it, I will. It's just a cost factor, pretty much, you know.
I have one question. Are there, so you use this as your summer, a summer place that you guys?
We have been for, we've been there for like twelve years, but my kids are grown up now. One's already out of college, one's in college, and they've got boyfriends. And next thing you know, I'm gonna have grandchildren. And the place is so tiny, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't work. Plus, I, you know, they like to ski. We can't use it in the winter. There's a whole bunch of different reasons. And I, like I said, I'm getting closer to retirement age. I'd like to retire there and make it my, you know, full-time home, you know. So it just doesn't, it wouldn't work with the camp, you know.
Okay. And I, I don't know, I, I'll preface this by saying, I don't know if this is a matter for this board. Are the lots on either side of you developed?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's.
Oh, okay. And they're full year housing?
Yeah, they're both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Then never mind.
Yeah, they're both.
I didn't know if this was gonna require a road change to give you.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, no, they're both, both sides of me are friends of mine, actually. That's why they're not here to protest because they have no problem with it. They're really nice people, actually.
Okay, then.
The, the guy that lives on my left side, he sold me the place twelve years ago. And the people on the right have been there a couple of years, and they're really awesome.
And that's your driveway, that little, uh, jut out?
Yeah, that's a, dirt road. It's just gonna stay dirt. We're not paving it or anything.
Okay. What size would the garage be? What are the dimensions gonna be?
Twenty-six by twenty-six or twenty-four by twenty-four. We're not positive on that. Nothing too big, just big enough for two cars to get in there. I'm working with, uh, Rob Turpin, who's actually right next door over here. And whatever he recommends is what we'd end up with.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
No, sir.
You may have a seat for a second.
Great, thank you.
With that, if there's anyone from the public which to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time. Introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public which to speak for or against this application. I bring it back to the board. Any further questions?
Of the?
Of the applicant?
No.
Or of the planning department?
Planning. Does Laconia require, um, that they sign a waiver if they're building on a private road?
We do.
Building?
We do.
Okay.
We haven't got to that point yet, but.
Okay. So you will. All right. Just that was just a, just something you should be aware of.
Yep.
What was that?
It's a, when you're building, when you get the building permit and you're building on either a private or a, a non-maintained road, you have to waive, you waive any liability that the municipality may have to either maintain the road or provide emergency services. You acknowledge that you're on a private road and you're basically on your own. And then the, the city or the municipality will grant you the right to build as long as you acknowledge that. And some places will even require, uh, extra, like sprinklers and.
Oh, yeah, not in this case.
But I don't think, I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
This, this doesn't, this doesn't look like it would require, go to that extent, but.
Yeah, I know they won't come down. Actually, my daughter had an emergency there and the ambulance parked way down the road and they walked down the house.
Yeah, we have, Laconia has a number of, uh, roads that are like that. So that's it. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think just to clarify, if, if the garage is built, then the, uh, the point of the garage closest to Layton Avenue would be fifteen feet? Because we're go, we're, even though it's not being built right now? Fifteen feet from the right-of-way? Fifteen, fifteen feet from the, from Layton Ave.
There's nothing down there.
So it would, it would be from the right, from the right-of-way.
From the edge of the right-of-way, not.
The road, the road is actually another ten-plus feet from there.
I understand. Yeah.
It's the actual road itself. And it's a big gully there. I, I don't think it could ever be changed without some significant work. It's a gully and then.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't get out there. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything from planning? Any closing comments?
Just wanted, just wanted to thank you for your time and actually moving, moving me forward because I, I gotta get this thing. It's starting to throb and swallow up on me. So, thank you.
Okay.
If, if I may, Chairman, actually, I, I just want to point out to the board that the applicant has gone to great lengths to keep the new structure out of the fifty-foot shoreline protection, which is our priority in, in at least that part of the community.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
I think it's a very reasonable, very reasonable request for this area. It sounds like a real reasonable use of a very oddly shaped road with some. And this is an older area and a lot of the homes are being moved out. Yeah, yeah. They're just, and as Dean pointed out, that was one of the things that I noted, that they made the effort to stay out of the, not, not to request permission to build in the fifty-foot shoreline, so. And I don't envision a superhighway going through there anytime in the next three hundred years. So I think.
So we don't feel the variance is in, is not contrary to the public interest?
Not much you're not believing about.
I find nothing, nothing, it's not con, none of, none of it is contrary to the public interest. Um, the spirit, and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Um, they're. Is this in the form of a motion?
I like to go through and just touch base and everything. And that way, if, if, if it ever has to leave our privy into a courtroom, then the judge has the ability to go, y'all discuss this, this, A, B, C, and D, and he knows what our thoughts are.
So anyway, I think that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The applicant has gone to, um, lengths to, um, position the new homes so that he's out of the fifty-foot shoreline setback. He's also removing some non-conforming sheds. He's moving the new structure out of the side setback. So I think that in, in the process, he has made every reasonable effort to conform to the, the ordinances and just needs the variance for the small area of the house and the garage. And I believe that substantial justice will be done. Um, the, uh, any potential impact or harm to the public is, is negligible and is, uh, the benefit to the applicant vastly outweighs anything that might have, might be detrimental to the public. I, I can't see that in this a particular area, there would be any negative impact on the public. The values of the surrounding properties will actually not be diminished. They will be increased because there'll be a new home. It will be vastly improved. Old structures will be gone. Um, it's, um, no, uh, fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the specific application to, of that provision to this property because of the location of the property on a private road, which is small and dirt anyway, and the very strange, the, the odd shape of the lot and the extremely constricted building envelope, um, that, that actually exists within that lot. And actually, they meet both, they mo, they meet, they meet both prongs of that, of that. Because they need, they need B as well because of the, the, the shape of the lot. It's an unnecessary hardship to force them to build within the envelope, particularly allowing the garage to be placed within the, the forty-foot setback.
Okay. Sounds like we got a motion.
I would make that motion.
And that would be to accept it?
To accept, I would, but move to accept application zero two zero one nine dash zero zero three seven for seventy-three Layton Avenue South to, um, construct the new home with, um, six hundred and eighty-seven square feet. It would be extending into the, um, front setback and the, uh, planned garage, either a twenty-four by twenty-four or twenty-six by twenty-six garage would be, um, proposed garage, which would extend into the front setback, um, to be fifteen feet from the actual right, edge of the right-of-way of the road.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion. Let the record indicate, the motion passes five zero. Enjoy your new home.
Awesome. Just wanted to thank yous all and thanks for getting me out here quick. I really appreciate it. And thanks for putting your time in up here. I know you guys have other things to do than come here at night, you know. Thank you.
Hope your, uh, hand feels better.
Yeah, I do too. I just gotta get home, take a couple of, uh, more Tylenol and get it elevated. Thanks again.
Yeah, you'll get your notice of action.
No, I appreciate all your help. Thank you. Guys have been great.
Okay. Next applicant is sixty-two Prescott, Presc-
Prescott.
Prescott. Thank you. Prescott Avenue. Uh, it's a variance applicant, uh, zero two zero one nine dash zero zero three six var, applicant is requesting a variance from Article six, section two thirty-five, thirty-five B, side setback and rear setback to allow for a boundary line adjustment between two non-conforming lots, sixty-two and sixty-four. Would the applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we might be of service.
Hi, I'm Lori Damaris of sixty-four Prescott Avenue. And we're looking for a variance to correct a boundary line adjustment. We purchased the home and at the time, we were told, well, not at the time, but months later, we were told that our fence was not on our property. And after further research, we realized that the fence wasn't actually the boundary line. And we approached our neighbor to correct the situation. Basically, what we're trying to do is, he, he's giving us a little bit on one end and we're giving him a little bit on the other end because part of his driveway and it's the front slab of his porch is actually on our land. And, and on the other end, he's giving us a little bit more towards the, I guess, the lake frontage.
I think the only question that I have is more procedural than anything, so I don't know if you can answer it. Is the other property owner, Mr.?
Here, Helen Ryan. No, he's not.
Third page in is a, a letter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
This is third page in on mine. That, it's in your hand. You just flipped it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he has signed off on all of the info. We're working with a lawyer. He's signed off on everything. Um, he's in agreement with it as well. He knows he could have been here, but I guess he chose not to.
Letter says he agrees based on the document signed, so.
And it is notarized, so.
And it is notarized and, yeah.
So that's just as good as him being here.
I don't think I have any questions. No, actually, I've seen so many of these, especially in these older subdivisions that lot lines just get lost.
Right.
Monumentation gets lost, homes get built, sheds get built.
That's what the surveyor said as well.
And things just shift around. And the next thing you know, you've got boundary line agreements or adjustments and.
We just wanted to set the record straight. So we're going, we want to go forward changing the deed and everything, just, just for everyone, all down the line.
We appreciate that because this, if it's, if it doesn't, at some point, you're right, down the line, then.
Right. If it's not now, it'll be some, at some point.
It's nice that it was, um, nice and amicably settled. That we appreciate. Yes, I think that this definitely is the way to go. It, it's, you've got two non-conforming lots. Yep. They're just gonna stay non-conforming. And the, the only difference is going to be a slight change in the. I agree. In the, the, uh.
What does it do to the setbacks?
One of them, one of them brings one of the lines. The two feet of the side. It's closer to the side setback.
Is that number eighteen and nineteen, or is it off of this document here? Is it, it's the one in the white, just, uh?
It's.
Four and three, three and four.
It's three and four. It's these two parcels.
Oh, okay.
And it's just.
One of them's house is on the lot line, it looks like currently.
Yeah, pretty much.
They're moving that line up this way. And then they're cutting into, then the other lot is getting a portion that comes more toward the waterfront.
Correct. Because right now, it looks as though it was our land down there by the waterfront because of where the fence is. And the fence has been there. We traced it back over forty years.
Is this little, the abutter, they're getting a chunk to make their, them a little off, get their property line off of, their house off the property line. This portion here is going to the abutter because that's where the property line actually ran. Instead of running along the fence that was there, it ran this way. And so the abutter is getting this, and they're getting a wedge of land up here. So basically, the two properties are still saying, staying non-conforming. But it's just that the lines are moving. And I think because the buildings are still within the setbacks and so close to the lines is why you would need the variance.
You're, you're gaining a little bit in one spot and losing it a little bit.
And taking it, moving it a little bit in another.
It's all, everything along that property line on both properties is basically non-conforming. So nothing gained, nothing lost by, by moving the property line except for.
It sounds basically, basically like a formality.
Yeah, it becomes clearer for the property owners who's got what.
So this is moving.
This is moving this way.
So this is gonna go this way?
This way.
Because that's too many different lines.
And this one, this one is going, they're getting a piece that comes up like this. It's gonna go into that property. And this is gonna go with this one.
So the house is actually gonna be on someone's property instead of two people's property? Is that the way I'm seeing it?
It's gonna be, it's on its own property. Yeah.
Right. It's gonna be on the correct property.
It's gonna be on its own property. Instead of on.
It's not gonna share.
Yeah.
You straddled exactly, straddling the line.
I just wanted to make sure that at least that much was also accomplished.
Yep.
Reminds me of Christmas Island.
Oh, yes. There were just so many old, so many of these old.
That's where we are. We're right behind Christmas Island.
Yeah.
Oh, so that explains.
The, the steakhouse? When you go, the new condos, if you keep going down to the old houses?
Used to be a realtor back there, and what a nightmare. Thank God this one person.
Being an abstracter, I'll tell you, being.
Oh, our survey, our survey company thought it was a nightmare.
Who did your survey?
There was, even with the condos recently being, being built, they just didn't have pins to go off of. It was a mess.
Yeah.
Uh, they're so old. It's so old back there that a lot of the monumentation is.
You would've pulled the prints on that or the layout on that property in the beginning and looked at it. There was houses in the middle of the road.
Uh, it's, yeah.
Now I understand.
I've had neighbors, old people, the old timers in the neighborhood, tell me that my house was once basically a two-room house. And it's a two-story, four-bedroom right now. And I go, oh, yeah, once. I remember this years ago. It was just this room and that room. It's crazy.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant at this moment?
I have none.
Okay, you may have a seat for a second. With that, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public which to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public which to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board. Any other questions? Anything from planning?
No.
Any closing comments?
No, outside of, I just wanted to thank you guys and also note the fact that every single dealing we've had with coming into the office downstairs has been so pleasant.
Oh, good.
And it is, it's just, it's refreshing to see how willing they are to help us out. And, and the process has been long, but easy. And I want to thank you all.
Good. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and, uh, bring it to the board for discussion.
It's just amazing how much, how little space there is between the houses down there to be able to make this kind of an adjustment.
Yes, yes. Fine little bits of inches.
How do you wanna go through the, yeah, the steps? Um, I, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Uh, the public will not be, the public at large is not going to be, um, impacted at all, um, by this. This is very specific to these two houses located in these, this, this old subdivision, um, where the monumentation has been lost between the two lots and, um, homes have been placed, and structures have been placed on, improperly on, um, just those two lots. Um, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The, both parties have gone to great expense, obviously, between court and surveyors and attorneys involved to, um, be sure that they, um, adequately address the, the encroachment issues and, um, that, uh, it's, there, these lots are already, um, non-conforming. And by doing this, uh, boundary line adjustment, you, uh, make the, um, encroachment that non-conforming, less non-conforming. They're still non-conforming lots. They're still encroaching into setbacks, but there's just, there's no way within this subdivision to change that. And so I think that by doing this, they, they've done the best they can to adhere to the, um, spirit of the ordinance. Um, substantial justice is done because this will, the, um, boundary line adjustment, the recordation of the plan and the deeds back and forth, establishing the new lines will set this, will memorialize this for future, um, conveyances and transfers of these homes. Uh, the proposed change will not affect the value of any surrounding properties. Uh, the only effect is going to be on these two properties, really. And to have your lines memorialized in this manner actually improves the quality and the value of your, your home. Um, the unnecessary hardship is simply that these are old, non-existent, uh, non-conforming existing lots. and this, this path that the parties have taken is the best one they can possibly be followed to remedy a, an encroachment situation.
Okay, we have motion?
Well, I'll second it.
We got a second, and that is to.
That is to approve application zero-two, two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-three-six-four, sixty-two and sixty-four Prescott Ave for the variance from two-thirty-five, two-thirty-five A and B for the side and rear setbacks.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion, pass is five-zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for the very well put together petition, by the way.
Mr. Chair, are you going to, which mic are you going to have on the next one?
Mine. You mind sitting out the next one?
Back to an author now, all right.
Mine. Okay. Next is application nineteen dash zero-zero thirty-eight variance, one-eleven Pendleton Road variance application. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article Six, Section two-thirty-five thirty-five B, side setback to allow for the reconstruction and conversion of a carport to live-in space. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you?
My name is Jordan Borlos, and we were looking to convert a carport that was previously approved out of variance in two thousand and nine to make livable space. So it currently goes over the ten-foot setback on the right side of the structure. The reason we're asking for a variance because of the lot size and the shape of it is not really anywhere else on the lot that you could do in addition, or.
You're staying within the existing footprint of the, of the carport?
No. We are staying within the setbacks for the rest of the addition. The current carport is going to be part of the addition. But in the two thousand and nine variance that was approved to build the carport, it's stated in it.
What you're talking about tonight is if you look at the yellow, the color photo, it's this section over here.
Correct.
Not the section on the other side of the house that's being worked on.
Correct. The section on the other side of the house is being worked on. We already have a permit for.
Well, it's just part of it because the lot line is somewhere in here and.
The lot line on the right side of the house is, is right at the corner of the carport.
When they built this originally, it was built to closer the lot line. And what, what this is, you're asking for tonight, is this, for this area here to be worked on.
I'm not sure what area it is that you're.
The white lattice fence.
Do you look, do you see the car?
To the right of the car?
It was originally built as a, like a carport.
Correct.
Yes, that's what he's talking about.
And you want to turn what's the carport now into?
Livable space.
Livable space, but you're not going to, you're not going to go outside of where the carport is, no?
Correct.
That's, that was my question. That was my question. You're staying within the footprint of where the carport is now. You're not getting any bigger.
Correct.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
So you're proposing where the corner of that carport comes to have zero setback from the property line there?
Yes.
Which as a carport, it has zero setback. Is that correct?
Probably.
Yeah, that was my thing. The existing, everything that's there has zero setback.
The wall may be a foot or so off the property line, but the roof overhang is probably at the property line.
I don't think those count for variances, do they?
No.
What doesn't count?
The, the, the overhang, the drip line, we measure from.
Well, in this case, I think it does because you can't have it dripping on someone else's property. Right? Because one person's property is from the ground up, and you can't have someone else's structure on, even the roof line going on someone else's property.
Okay.
I don't believe.
You're seeing it as a plane?
I'm, well.
No, a vertical plane, like we're looking at it.
That's the rights of a deed. If you've got all the rights of a deed, then yes, it's vertical.
Yes, it's a vertical plane, right.
It's a vertical plane, so the roof shall not be on someone else's property.
We can construct a new structure and not be overhanging their property.
So the overhang will not go over.
Correct.
Because that other guy should have the same right to be able to put it.
I'm not going to disagree. I, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm like, I didn't realize that, so that's good.
The, the representation of the lot is not, when you're looking at this picture?
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
The representation of the lot is, is not one-hundred percent accurate. It's.
Tax map accurate.
Yeah.
Yes, which is.
So it is what it is. It's been this way for ten years now.
It is, okay. And I don't see anybody else here to, not that that really matters, but I don't see your, any of your neighbors here to object to this. Yeah, because if you look at this, the yellow one, it almost looks like it's over the lot line. Do you see what I'm saying here?
How are we going to control?
But again, it's.
Well, the problem is nobody knows exactly where the lot line is over here. That could be true.
So we only have a tax map representation? We don't have a survey here?
Correct.
Does the property have a survey?
No.
No.
I mean, this costs, a situation like this costs someone a quarter of a garage.
Yeah.
Already.
Hmm, yes, the five-sided garage on Williams Boulevard.
Yep. Because they came.
Now, did you go back to the, was it the two thousand and nine variance that allowed the carport, you said?
Yes.
Did you look at that?
Yeah.
Is that variance in order? In other words, is where the carport is now, is that consistent with the variance that this board granted in two thousand and nine?
We, we could take a look at the, the building permit. We haven't done that yet. That would be the only way for us to.
And we don't have a survey, so this is going to be at best an eyeball anyway.
I mean, I'm not stuck on being at a zero setback. I mean, we can, I can adjust it to a one-foot setback at, based on the fact that there isn't a survey and there's a tax map.
So what we're concerned about is, is that vertical plane that runs between, yeah, and we don't, we can't have that eve go into somebody else's property.
So you consider making the carport a little smaller, or the addition a little smaller there to?
I'd be fine with that. Opposed to asking for a zero setback, I'd be fine with a, a one-foot setback, if that's satisfied.
Gives contractors a little bit of room to play.
Well, it makes me more comfortable to at least have something like that.
One or two, or two.
Yeah, only because once they start putting the pins in, things start to move around anyway, and then.
It's up to the board to say one or two. That's up to you guys. So.
And when I say a foot, I, I would make sure that the overhang was that foot, not the footing.
Okay, that's, that's, in this case, that's very important. And regular building inspection is going to continue on this, right?
Yeah.
So you'll, you'll.
I don't need a permit. We'll do inspections. We'll.
You'll do the inspections once the footings and everything are done, so you'll, you know, so there's going to be some level of oversight on this. I know there always is, but.
Any other questions at the moment?
I'd be a little, I, I'll just say, I'd be a little more comfortable with a two-foot setback. I know there's already something there, and.
Not only is there something there, but it's dilapidated. Whoever built it, we didn't own it at the time, obviously, when it was built. It's not pleasing to look at. It's, it's not usable space. I mean, has like six-foot ceiling height, so not only is that overhang on their property, you can't even walk under it. So at this point, we're, we're changing the roof structure completely. The overhang won't even be on the abutting property's side because we're changing the roof's roof structure.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is what, how, how, what's the pitch of the roof going to be?
The pitch of the roof is going to be the same height as the existing main structure, but, but it's going to be, instead of a shed roof pitched to one way, it's going to be a dormer.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So that carport roof will come off and become a dormer, abutting into the existing right-side pitch.
It'll certainly look nicer.
Yeah.
I have some photos if you'd like to see what it's.
Please.
Yeah, yeah. And again, we're in, we're in a neighborhood of town where the lot, the lots are irregular, the, the, the buildings that have been on them are.
It's been, it's been developed for a long time.
Been developed and overdeveloped for years and years and.
And if you look at the lot, I think it's Lot one oh five to the right, which is also newly purchased, I believe. That lot is perfectly symmetrical to the house, and they could, they're perfectly in their setbacks centered in the lot, and they could do an addition anywhere they wanted to.
Yeah.
As far, as far as we can, we, everything would be off-centered and.
It's just the history of the area and the way, the way it's developed, you know, I mean.
It'd be nice.
All of these at once were little summer cottages that.
Makes more sense.
That answers a lot of questions for me. Thank you. That makes a lot more sense. Yes, that would be very nice.
We keep you?
Can you keep them?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions at the moment?
I'm just looking.
You may have a seat for a second.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. It's got to be done.
I know, we know that. We know.
Never know when someone's going to come around the corner going, need to speak. Let the record indicate, no one from the public was to speak for or against this application, therefore, I bring it back to the board for further questions. Now, was that a carport in alliance and in agreement with the, what was granted to them to build?
That was my question to, to Dean, was did they do it right in two thousand and nine, according to what we approved then?
Yeah, it was about three feet from the property line according to the minutes. Then we, should we change our, our, our motion to be consistent with what, with the, what was granted in two thousand and nine with the three feet?
Well, we haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, okay, but I'm just saying.
You can, or you, you could establish a new one now.
So any other questions of the applicant?
The applicant, no.
Any closing statements? With that, I'm going to, any words of wisdom from planning?
When we get the building permit, we'll try to ascertain where the property line is as best we can, and we'll go out there and take a look at it.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Okay.
Cool beans.
Cool beans. Only. Well, it's cold out.
Well, I'm for sure thinking, like with Michael, at least a minimum two feet away.
I would, you know.
I think it ought to be at least two feet away from the property line and.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely.
I've really never been a fan of zero setbacks. I had it done to me back in the day, and I have lived to regret that. I wasn't more involved at the time to come and say something about it.
I'm in the same boat exactly as you are, so I'm not a fan of the zero setback either.
Should be able to mow around the back, but pass around the back of it, so two, three feet, either right in there, wherever.
Well, it's not either. It's, it's two or three.
Let's make the building inspector's job particularly onerous today.
Two feet, four inches.
You should be able to move around it at least.
In this case, we have to put a number to it.
Yes.
That's agreeable by the board. Two foot, three foot?
I could live with two feet.
Two foot?
Sure.
Two foot?
Sure.
Two foot, two foot, yep, two foot.
Make sure that it stays.
But yeah, that's why I asked.
Yes, that it must be two feet from.
Instead of scrutiny, we'll go with strict scrutiny.
Okay, so. We want to go through the requirements?
Oh, I, I, I'll, I'll say, as far as number one, granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest. It is definitely a visual improvement to the property. Okay, I mean, that, um, that. I don't see where the spirit of the ordinance is being, as long as we're, you know, we're talking two feet now, right?
Yes.
Um, as long as, I, I don't see that there's any hindrance to the spirit of the ordinance, because we are improving the current structure, and there's something there now. Okay?
Removing of substandard.
And we're removing a substandard structure and putting a better structure there. Uh, yes, substantial, yes, substantial justice is definitely being done, because this proposal will improve the property. And, you know, like you said in the previous one, it will improve the property value, and that tends to bring the property values of the surrounding properties up along with it. The value of the surrounding properties won't be diminished, because there is already something there. It's already an unimproved, it's already a non-conforming lot. There's really no way to make it conforming. And as he says, the structure is dated. It is in need of repairs. And I think the hardship here, I, you know, five, eight, I, is that the general, the special conditions exist, just because, again, the size of the shape of the lot, the existence of, he's got wetlands apparently in the rear, so any addition can't go back. And it's reasonable, because there already is an existing structure, which we granted in a variance in two thousand and nine. And it's the only place that this could be achieved. It's reasonable, and I, that the current structure is not usable to the property owner, well, you know, but that's just a statement. Anyone have any disagreements, agreements?
Nope. As long as the condition is that it's two feet from that property.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion. Motion passes. Enjoy. Motion passes, enjoy. Have a good night, have a good holiday. Okay. Other business.
I was expecting it tonight, yeah.
Alright, no other business, I'd make a motion, before I do, I would like to take my opportunity and wish for everybody. A happy holiday and a happy new year, I tell you, the board's been really good. We've done a lot of work this year, I think we've done a lot of successful work this year, in helping to improve the city and, and. Help people get what their dreams and aspirations have been, and I think we've done good.
Yes, to our huge viewing audience, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
You don't know how many people are out there.
Believe it or not, I do get stopped in people's, say, we do, yes, people watch us and tell me that.
It's true.
They like the work we're doing and stuff like that, so keep those comments coming.
Yeah, and since the year end is, I, I'd also like to thank.
I think I'll keep my comments to myself.
You know, as a member of the board, I'd also like to thank the planning staff, like the other people did, because you guys have really put together some really tight proposals for us that. Have been much appreciated by the members of the board.
You're welcome.
Particularly the typed out, so that you're not trying to read. I mean, if I had to handwrite it, everybody would be going, yeah, they wouldn't be happy with it either, so. My handwriting is terrible.
And one other thing, can I get another one of these, this is.
I gotta get that updated, I'm gonna probably shoot out an email to everyone, just to make sure everything is current, everything's correct, so you have a new list.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
With that, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, good night.
We're out of here, everybody, everybody.
The second came before the first.
Well, I thought, I thought Steve was making a motion.
I did too, I did too. But Steve never makes motions, and we know that.
So we'll let Mike make the motion.